Okay, we good? Alright, it is 7:00 PM August 29th. We'll head call this order for the evening, we got a couple items that are on the agenda, first item being the public hearing for the site plan for Cleanway restoration and construction. And then after that's public hearing is completed, we will roll into a regular scheduled planning commission meeting. My name is Trey White, I am the chairman for the city of Longview Planning Commission. The purpose of the public hearing meeting is to contain citizen comments and concerns on the Cleanway restoration and construction development. Before we get started, I'd like to give a brief overview of how we intend for this public hearing to flow. First, we'll have a presentation of the project by the applicant, did we have somebody from that thing? We'll have a presentation of the project by the applicant. The dialogue between the applicant and the planning commission or the public will be minimal, if any, it's just a general overview of what you intend to do, okay? After the applicant presentation is completed, then we'll open the floor for public comments or concerns. There are a few rules we follow for this public comment time. First off, if you haven't signed in, Jay, you said there was a sign in sheet, is it up here? Yeah, if you don't, if you don't want to come up here and sign right now, but if you don't mind, please sign in before you leave. There are a few rules for the public comment time. We would like all speakers to come up here to the mic and state their name and address and confirm they are a resident of Longview. We would ask that each speaker keep their time to two to three minutes. I hate to say, but it's one of these things that's kind of necessary, unruly behavior is prohibited. We just ask that, please be courteous and considerate with your language and actions. I know a lot of times we have items that can be gone for public hearing and kind of get people a little fired up, hopefully that's not the case. After the public comment time is completed, we will then offer the applicant any opportunity for closing comments. A lot of times there might be a comment that comes up during the public comment time. We're sitting going back and forth, we just kind of make notes, the applicant comes back up and just kind of had us a, maybe give a little more color to the answer to the question. Then after the closing comments by the applicant, we will, or the developer, we will adjourn the public hearing meeting. We will then transition possibly after a short break into the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. And just please note, we have the public hearing prior to the planning commission meeting, so as commissioners can take into account comments from the public, okay? Sir, if you don't mind, Cleanway, if you don't mind me coming through yourself and just kind of give a description of what you're looking to do as a developer?
Uh, my name is Caleb Wood.
Caleb Wood?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm the managing partner with Cleanway out of central Arkansas. We're just hoping to, I've been looking at land for probably about a year over this direction. I've outgrown my shop in Conway and we have a, we have a 20,000 square foot shop in Jonesboro, which is where my headquarters is at. I'm just wanting to build something around 6,000. And I do a lot of flooring for Shaw and companies like that, that, and they prefer a decent sized showroom with that. And then I'm just planning on having two offices and a conference room with that. Mainly gonna be, primarily gonna be a bay. The shop itself is gonna be a 20 by, 20 by 60 and then, or the office area is gonna be a 20 by 60 and the shop itself is gonna be the remaining 80 by 60. There's only gonna be three bay doors on it. I don't have a site plan set for this because I've not purchased the land yet. My offer on land is continued on y'all's approval for a site, for a building that I want to build over there. I just, I haven't really laid out like my parking lot setup or anything like that. Of course, I'll have to follow permits and guy bonds for the city and for the county, so I mean, it'll have to be so far off the road and so on and so forth. But as far as like a parking lot plan or anything like that, I've not had anything set together for that yet.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any public comment at this time on the progress development? Oh, yes. How are you? Good, good?
Hi, my name is Angie Rios, I'm a neighbor, I'll be a neighbor to you if you buy it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted to make sure that you take into consideration the noise levels that's gonna be there. And maybe perhaps even offer a little extra mitigation, noise mitigation, because when trucks come by there, probably once a week, there's a blowout on the semi. And also, that's where the, the structure jake breaks right from the house. So as a good neighbor, you might want to put extra windows in there, maybe extra insulation, just so that it can be a good place for people to hear what they're having to say. And as long as they're not doing any manufacturing, I'm good with it.
Um, do you, do you mind your address?
Forty Rocky Point Road, Fort Worth. It's right in front of where the car dealership building is now, or north.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Caleb, do you, you got your offer, chance to?
I wanna.
Anything to add?
Yeah, so we are a 24/7 service, I do restoration. We're not there 24/7, but you know, we do work throughout the night sometimes, especially during thurises and stuff like that or storms. Though actual construction will be going on there after the actual building is built. It's mainly just somewhere for me to keep my dumpsters, somewhere for me to keep my vans, my equipment. Just, there, there will be people in and out of there continuously, but it's not, we won't be creating any more noise to what's already there. So that's all I really have to say, but I appreciate y'all's time.
Alright, we will conclude this portion of the, of the evening, or conclude the public hearing at this time. Public hearing will be adjourned at 7:07 PM. We'll take a couple minutes here, if you haven't signed in, and you'd like, if you'd like to go ahead and sign in, go ahead and sign in before we actually, or anybody else, before we start in our actual planning commission meeting.
I don't mind just, I'll re-close on this issue.
Yes, we, we have to start our planning commission meeting.
One more thing, I, since you said there were gonna be dumpsters, I would appreciate it if there was some kind of shield of a dumpsters, something. A barrier, so that they wouldn't succeed from the road.
Thank you, thank you. Are you starting?
Yep.
You good?
I'm good.
I've got 7:09 PM, we will call the order, or planning commission meeting, August 29th. We do have a core, Lynn, Bray, myself, Ryan, Kim. We will now go to first quarter business, which is the approval of the amendments for July. I'll try to go through them speedily and so that we can go along. Meeting was called at order at 7:01 PM by Trey White, public hearing, which was a brief overview. Trey White gave a brief overview of the hearing, gave the purpose of the hearing. Which is in order to comply with section 3.3 of the zoning ordinance proposed amendment was read and four opened for public comment. There was no public comment, at 7:05 PM, the public hearing was closed, where he transitioned into the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Members present, Todd, Ryan, Kim, Gina, Trey, Mr. Cooper. Approved the amendments for the June 13th meeting. Approved unanimously, approved the amendments for the June 27th meeting. Those were approved unanimously. There was a motion to approve revised site plan for a landmark Baptist church. That was approved unanimously. Transitioned into the next topic, which explained changing or modifying the zoning regarding storage units for from permitted to conditional use in the highway mixed use area. There was a question on the floor regarding leasing. We also discussed change, the name changed to self-storage facility, there was discussion on that. There was discussion of reasoning for amending the zoning ordinance. And then there was a motion to recommend the city council, because while we were doing that time, it was making recommendations, the city council, storage units from permitted uses to conditional uses. And also name change to self-storage. Gina Branson asked with inside access, with climate controlled unit development, we changed as well. There was comments regarding our zoning and as compared to what, as we've been talking about the UDO. How, what, how that comparison was. There's further discussion to amend the current motion to include indoor and outdoor storage facilities. Motion to amend by Kim, that passed unanimously. A motion to recommend to the city council to move storage units from permitted use to conditional use and name change to self-storage. And that hands lead for the recommendations to the city council, meeting was adjourned at 7:50. Motion to approve second, a motion to approve the amendments by Ryan, and second. Any further discussion? If not, although the paper approved the amendments through July 25th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there are none, that's a no. Not any old business on the agenda. Where's the best you could have known of? We will transition into new business, our agenda says main street plans first and then Cleanway restoration, construction site plan will be second. We're actually gonna flip those, so as you know, you're gonna stay here all night, hopefully we don't even. So let's go ahead and address the Cleanway restoration and construction site plan. So this is not a site, yeah, go ahead, please don't, it's a lot of these several questions. So you did not provide a site plan?
No, sir.
So there's, this is not a site plan review?
No, sir.
Right, so you are looking for what?
I just, so I kind of submitted some pictures along the lines of what we're planning on building, we're planning on building exactly that as far as a storefront. I mainly just, I mean, I, I know you can't approve what I've given you based on what I've given you, but I kind of was looking for more of a direction of if I was gonna get approved, if I spent all this money on this thing. I'm just, I'm trying to know, I just don't wanna go spend this money and buy this land.
Yeah, for it.
Yeah, doesn't want to get stuck with horse, make sure he's kind of good.
Agreed, agreed. However, we can't get approved without knowing that, without having set a plan.
Yes, right.
And so I think we, as far as zoning is concerned, the piece of property that you're talking about is, do you have an address?
It's a, it's a highway mixed use is what it's, what it's.
Where's on that, right? And have you, and so the permitted uses for highway mixed use? And would we say that this would fall under?
So is it utility equipment or contractor parking slash storage?
It's gonna be more contractor parking slash storage. I mean, I am gonna have a storefront operation out of it and I will have, you know, someone in the office, eight to five every day.
Will you have fence around it?
Um, I don't really intend to, maybe for the parking section, section where I plan on keeping my trailers and my trucks and stuff like that.
So here's what I'm, because I don't want to get into a bunch of, hey, you gotta go do this, you gotta go do this. Okay, so what I would, what I would do is.
What in the UDO that's industrial?
Well, so we, so if we hang over to the highway mixed use, right? We had residential, we know some of that, we have retail, commercial, which could be. We have professional and personal services, comes on bank, business office. Wholesale sales, are you selling products out of it?
Or, yes, sir.
Public buildings and offices, main storage buildings. So from our standpoint, given his description, I think our, my question would be, do we think that this would be a permitted use within a highway mixed use area? That's what, and then from there, you're gonna need to reference, because there's, we talk about development. Y'all correct, I'm, I'm probably, y'all, oh, correct. From, from a development standpoint, did this, we kind of have a couple different documents out there on the website.
Yes.
One talks about development review and.
Yes.
And some of it you can do, but I'm gonna point you towards section 6.1 part zone.
Okay.
Okay? But that talks about a site plan review, it kind of goes into detail of what you'd have to have. And within that, it talks about, you know, where we have to have a public hearing for developments in highway mixed use areas.
Yes.
Okay, so. Hence, we have had a hearing tonight, I guess, obviously, right? Even though we don't have a site plan, so that's kind of, but again, we're trying to work with you as far as that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna kind of open it up to the, um, commissioning to kind of discuss or maybe give some feedback or here's a comment regarding whether or not you believe this business would be a permitted use in a highway mixed use area.
I'll start though.
Okay.
I feel, I mean, I feel it, it does, if it's that, there're gonna be some stipulations we put on there or whatever, but I mean, like I said, I feel it's a highway mixed use, it's a business. I mean, commercial, it's not, I don't feel it's industrial or anything like that, so.
I feel like it's light industrial.
But either way, it's still.
So if it were a tall company and they shipped it on the back and they had, that would be light industrial. And they had business trucks parked.
So, so do you, so Kim, are you saying you do not believe it's a permitted use in highway mixed use?
Can I phone a friend? That's, that is my, that's.
I have, I have a tendency to.
That is my first.
They're more, uh, commercial, what I think is commercial build.
So you think, you think it's a permitted use?
Yes, I think it will fit into it with, by it too.
Right. Right, you have some thoughts. That's how I'm kind of leaning, I'm looking at the, the UDO and stuff, it's kind of see the difference between a light industrial. And I don't remember, we got.
He's not making anything there.
Right, right. UDO is not starting, not starting, but it is a reference for us to have, right? To provide a little more context with each other as far as that goes. I, I have a tendency to decide that it is also a permitted use within the highway mixed use as well. Other comments? And what I'd like to do, what we're not gonna be able to do, is when we can't get 100% say, oh, yeah.
Yes.
All he want to know is, what he doing, will it fit permit in that block?
I don't, I don't.
And, and until you bring us a set of plans?
Yes.
Right.
With an actual, I, I understand that 100%, but I just kind of, I mean, I don't need to.
I get it, 100%.
I just don't want to go spend this money and then turn around and then say, oh, you can't do that with the land and then I'm stuck with it.
And, and the other part of this is with your site plan that will have to be developed and drawn by a, 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 an engineer.
Yes.
They recommend, well, if they make sure that it fits the property.
Yes.
Fits with all the criteria that's.
Um, I, I have personally went out there and followed regulations and done a little paint with my roller to make sure that it would fit with, it looked in the state regulations. And does, I'm not, I don't have a bachelor's degree that can certify that, but I mean, then it could be, 10 years on a contract.
Do you feel confident everything when you've got?
Yes, sir. I think.
I think all he really wants to do is, well, this, what he want to do, be permitted, not so much if we approve it or not, but before I buy it, is it what we have to do.
Uh, and not on that, but I just want to be sure that when you come back, cause what we don't want, right, what would be frustrating would be.
Another public hearing.
Well, and from your standpoint, you can kind of bring in a set of drawings that you think are, would be approved, if you just talk to the city engineer, if your engineer has approved it, the criteria that's in our zone.
Yes.
So, alright, any other comments for him? I don't believe this is something that we need to take a formal vote on, but I do think we do need to give him, you know, I'd like to give some verbal feedback.
I, I think what he want to do will be fit with it perfectly.
I would be, yes, sir.
I don't like the look of the building.
I turn it off.
I'm gonna make that up there.
I, I understand.
It is not adding to the city at all, so you can change that.
Um, do you have suggestions as far as you don't like the brick, you don't like the metal, you don't?
Be careful with that, that's a good question.
I just, I'm pretty much trying to just do a, a, a duplicate of my job as well.
What question?
So what I would say is, it's, it's not for us to design a building for you, but we will get guidance once you design a scale. As far as how we think it needs to fit within our.
My other question is, which I believe this is the highway issue, is the billboard, do I need to discuss that?
Deal with the highway department.
And we have an ordinance for signs in the city.
Yes, I've seen, I've seen the ordinance for much all or what's allowed, but I, I would say that's a highway.
So you're also gonna be in an overlay district, so you have to look at the highway overlay, or corridor overlay district as well.
Um, I do also have access directly onto this property and onto the bypass, I have the gate on it right now, is that something that I would also have?
Well, it's, are we into, you own the property and the gate, you have access to the.
So I can access that directly on bypass, that was another question.
So getting a gate and a gate, but if there's one there, the highway is not giving, highway partner do not give any more access, because the land has one, it is an access.
And we have had other development individuals groups, we will call it, where they will spend a little money, maybe on a run in with their engineering group before they purchase the property.
Yes.
Just to be sure that there was nothing, they did a professional eyes on that.
And I was, I fully intend on doing that, just kind of, I, I didn't want to spend, it's a lot to get an architect, I just don't want to go pour money down the water for them to just, for y'all not to, for you're not, not allowed at all. So I just, kind of with some direction from y'all.
And there's a city engineer, Frank Foster?
Yes, sir.
Okay. E W fifty, there's that too, right?
Yes, sir.
And we answered your questions.
Absolutely, yes, sir. I believe, I believe we're gonna be pointing out, we're having kind of been forward of confidence, I would.
We appreciate you considering.
Yes, sir, I appreciate y'all's time.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, thank y'all for that. We will segue into the master street plan with Ken Williams and Steve Craig. Obviously, this is a trial, so I, I know we got the, the role, the job, other than that, huh?
We're good.
Okay.
Alright, so thank y'all for allowing us to put this on here for y'all, first off. All this is, Mr. Commissioner, is to try to rekindle a fire on it. Um, so two and a half, or let me start at the beginning, what kind of got us into this is me and Mr. Williams last month went to CDI training, Security Development Institute. It's a three-year program taught at UCA, where every year you go for a week and after three years you can get your professional certified economic development license. So, and that, all that means is you've learned about how to, they can help you grow your community with different things aesthetically and all that. Um, so when we go and meet every year, we do this, there's different speakers that come in and issue on year two, the big thing was how important plans are for your city. Uh, and one of the biggest thing they talked about is making sure that you maintain and update your plans constantly, right? Things change, uh, building material changes, the construction stuff changes. So we're like, we haven't ever really finished our master street plan, we worked on it two and a half years ago, but we never really 100% committed to it, completed it and sent it to the council for approval. Um, and so that's one thing that we're, we're just requesting is kind of rekindle this fire, let's get it back on the agenda and maybe have a couple work sessions and finalize it. Uh, so for commissioners that were here, like I said, they did work on it, um, they started looking at the map, updating streets, uh, they got, I think with, uh, our engineer to look over some of the road dimensions and make sure that we were doing ditches right wing. Making sure the culverts were right, curb and gutter and that kind of stuff is all corrected. Um, and again, right now, we're currently operating off this one right here, uh, it's from 1997, right? So that's our current master street plan, it's over 25 years old, right? We definitely need to update it. Uh, things have changed, like I said, inside of it, there's sections where it talks about culverts and then galvanized material, which we all know, galvanized culverts don't last, right? They've all started changing to the plastic or concrete, something like that, so there's just little things, all we're doing, asking y'all to do some homework, look into it, see what's the changes they made. Make it align it with the UDO, since we're looking at that, the UDO does have sections there about streets with roadway links and stuff like that, so make sure everything kind of lines up. Uh, cause I know y'all have been working on the UDO and we want to get that done too. This way, we won't have two documents that conflict with each other, um, is another big thing on it. Again, the map that we're using right now is this one, again, from 1997. Freddie Fox is the one that kind of started all this years and years ago, like I said. You can see a big difference in this one, the one you have in your packet is, it has a five mile boundary, right? Um, back then, we had a plan area five miles, now it's down to one mile for a city of first class or second class.
So you don't think our master street, that actual map has been.
It hasn't.
That's.
We did all this work, got to the end.
It was never finalized by the council.
Yeah, I never sent it to them.
So in the ordinances, if you look in the planning commission section, it talks about the master street plan and other territorial plans. Once they get done, they just have to be submitted to the council through our, by resolution of the, the planning commission. So the way I read it, and I'll double check, uh, with some other people, but I don't think an ordinance has to be changed or nothing like that, it's just an approval by the council. Um, and so when we agree with y'all, let's, let's do it.
So we got two documents.
That's my understanding, you have the booklet, yeah, it's a, in y'all's packet, I think it's like a cream or peach color, is that right?
Pink.
A pink or whatever, yeah, it's on the website as well. It's like 10 pages long up here or something, and it shows the cutaways of each road on each classes, the minor arterial, the, everything like that, and so just make sure all that's up to date and, um, I think it should mimic the UDO. I mean, that's up to y'all to decide, but if that's what we're looking at going to, it'd be nice if they both, they'll talk to each other.
In, in discussion, when we had our last work session, you know, Frank Foster was there, you know, he says he put a lot of work into some of the street sections.
Correct.
Right, and so that would be, I think the map's one thing that had, if I remember correctly, sound like what you got there, Ken, that.
Yeah, so this map right here is the one that.
Yeah, those, those sections, that's, Trey may be more interested in that than his actual.
The actual map, the map I know y'all worked on quite intensively, as far as figuring out which streets don't need to be in there. There's like one I remember y'all deleting, it ran right to the middle of the Veterans Museum. That's probably never gonna, I mean, you can leave it on there, I guess, if it ever burns down, we remove it, you know, and put it somewhere else, but then it's cutting. That's probably never going, I mean, you can leave it on there, I guess, if it ever burns down, we remove it, you know, and put it somewhere else, but then it's cutting right to the middle of the city park. So, you want to connect your street going to the middle of the city park, you know, I mean, that's, things that y'all got to kind of look at and see. Um, the new, um, Hill Farm subdivision, so, we just need to update those kind of things on it. Double check and make sure that our minor arterial and collectors, the green and purple streets are current, like, we still want to do that, I mean, look at your, what the descriptions are, and when you start looking at like the, uh, minor arterials, that's like Truck Street, right? It shows them being four lanes eventually. Do we see, see those roads getting that big, ever, you know, that kind of stuff? Uh, so just kind of, kind of take all that in, if that makes sense, is what we're, we're asking to look over. Um, and then again, this is that map from twenty-one, I think is the date on the bottom, I didn't look, I think it's June twenty-one or June twenty-two. Uh, but Metro Plan drew up to kind of go by. Again, scribble out roads, add new ones, whatever y'all want to do when we get done with it, we can stand it, you know, Metro Plan will update the map for us so we can get it finalized and put with the packet. Um, and again, I know I'm here to help y'all on any of this, because I'm a firm believer in planning, um, that we need to make sure we know what we're going to spend our money for, right? Um, and what future plans, because I'd hate to buy a piece of property and realize that you're going to put interstate right next to it, you know, later on, so.
And one thing I would tell this as a planning commission, I, I just happen to see it for news, but there's a large dispute down the city of up right now with open development, based on what the planning commission voted on as compared to what they had on the street plan. And so, if you haven't seen that, it might be worth scrolling back and just reading my recent articles, as far as what's going on with that development, how, how that kind of affected the planning commission.
And, you know, me and Chris Williams were looking through it, and in that packet, we realized how, I, I don't want to say aggressive, but progressive, I guess, Mr. Mr. Fox was, when he helped get this together, like, it shows bike trails and everything on there back in ninety-seven, I don't think anybody's really thinking that far in the future, that that's going to be a big thing in the years now, so. Um, yeah, just keep in mind all those kind of updates.
I know we are, like, on the secondary path toward the greenway, Metro Plan Greenway, um, to connect and have the biking trail.
Come on through this way, and see, that's another plan I'd like to see, this is a whole other thing, is connectivity plan. I'd like to see the city come up with a connectivity plan, showing where future bike trails, walking trails, sidewalk stuff, that would be, so people know where to expect things to go, you know?
There's many trends coming out right now, since Robert Fox got awarded fifty million dollars pretty much for this, so. First things first, we got to remember, so, how, how do we, what we want to do, Kim, I'll let you kind of comment first, as far as, are we, do we need to have another working session, you think, on the street plan, or is it basically, hey, we consider this, put it on the agenda for the next month, and try to go ahead and make recommendations to the city council?
Yes, I think that, I don't think we need a working session for the street plan. We just want to go, we had so many.
Work is part of the street plan though, so, I don't know if we need to, because that is the master street plan, it tells you the wits and everything on the roads and all that when you develop them, so, I don't know if y'all need to have one more session just to go through it with the engineer and make sure it aligns with what he was thinking of. And we could do it before the planning commission meeting, and there's no big rush on this, all I'm asking is, I, I just like I said, if I can get it back on there by the end of the year, maybe have something finalized in front of council, would be nice, to get it, get it off of our books, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Uh, let me do this, I will reach out to Trey Foster and see where he's at, uh, in regards to sections, um, on the actual streets. And what may, may not modify, and what, how do you want to.
Yeah, because I think on the narrow.
Because I, I think.
We didn't, if we modified it, basically, everything would go back to, um, a collector's street, where it's just a.
You don't, you don't have to. Actually, modify some of these, on some of these.
Yeah, because y'all were talking about increasing the rideways on some of it, if I remember right, and stuff like that, and that, that's what.
You can sort of move that, well, that's.
Pay to Mr. Foster, then we can maybe set something up back for the next month maybe.
I'll report back on what he thinks.
And like you said, just read the book, like I said, I know there's some things in there talking about galvanized culverts, there's things talking about you putting, uh, your sewer and water runs in the roadway, which we all know that's a problem with a dump creek, right? On, on that stuff, everything is a main break, we have to patch a section road, so, um, just kind of look at all that and see what y'all thoughts on it.
Good.
Any questions for me or Chris Williams, can I cover everything?
Can you clearly talk to him and have him present it for us to vote on that?
I think it's real quick, I'll be totally honest, but I think.
I think you can do it two meetings, probably.
I, I think the, let me see where he's at.
Yeah.
Because most civil folks have a pretty good lead time right now on their work. And so, let, let, let me see where he's at and, and maybe, at the, at a minimum, I think we, uh, figure out. Yeah, let, let me see where he's at.
Also, why don't you just make something think in my mind, I want to look in the code, but we might have to have a public hearing, I think the plan change as well. Um, so let me double check on that to make sure before I commit a hundred percent to that.
No, that's not, I think if you get our, what we say.
Let's pass this on.
And very good.
Any other questions for Ryan, while you're at?
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
We will go to, um, move on to announcements, any other public comment? Uh, just as a note, uh, Kelly and, uh, I have a, both are contacted by development, right outside the city, but within a one-mile radius, uh, right across the bypass, Ford Marshall Building. They, um, I don't know that it's really got to come before us for any reason. They were looking at it, uh, and they will have to turn in site plan most likely, just to be sure that there's not any road improvements that you can make. Cause it is within one mile radius. All right, supposedly, they'll, they'll be on the agenda for next month, we'll see what happens. All right, any other announcements, comments? Appreciate everybody being here this evening, and I will adjourn the meeting, uh, seven thirty-seven.